I don't think we have anything, we had our two meetings, but I don't think we have anything to report.
I am sorry for that.
Other than the turnout was lousy.
Yeah.
Oh, it was?
So I don't think we have anything to report.
It was mostly master plan committee members and a handful of public. Yeah.
Hello?
Hello. Hello.
You work at tomorrow?
You talking to me?
Yeah, you.
What you got?
I'll be calling Monday.
Oh. How did Kathy make out at Canton?
Um, fine. That's what I'm gonna drop off.
Oh, I'm not until Tuesday.
Fine.
Perfect.
We're ready to rule. You want, we're on? Okay. The hour being after seven o'clock, May 5th, with the quorum, we'll open the meeting. First off, the minutes of April 21st, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, okay. I am, would you want? That's a GFR fellow, I assume? All right, for endorsements. Your next step after you say so.
Kyle has checked these, Jack?
Hmm?
Kyle has checked them.
We all set? Kyle?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, your next step after you get an endorse, who'll be doing the ahead and after?
Yes.
All right. Uh, so Kyle, you've checked them out, everything's in order?
I did, Mr. Chairman.
You got to have the microphone?
Yes. They're all set.
Okay. I'll make a motion to endorse. Martha Sola?
Second.
Second, discussions. All in favor?
Aye.
Rules, abstain.
Have the new fire?
Yes.
Turnaround and everything is there?
I have the decision on the last page, so I think we covered all the papers.
Okay.
It's also fire service on it now.
Yes.
Okay.
You're gonna turn the TV on?
I know. Actually, I don't wanna stress around.
Going for record on this, how many pages to assign?
Hmm.
Oh, oh, oh. All right, see what it is, just on the bottom. We'll sign the document.
This may not make it. You used on A.
You have more pens?
No.
You have more pens? I may have one in my bag if that one doesn't burn. Okay. Go ahead. Do you remember if I gave you comments on the meeting minutes? Dead. No.
It's not here.
Oops.
No one shares a plan, is there?
Not that I didn't believe. Do you have another Sharpie, Kate?
This, Jack has one, right?
Brand new, John?
Does it brand new? Should start charging the applicants a Sharpie fee.
Really?
Yeah, Petrosi's doggy wallet might, might shouldn't pay. Hey, Kyle. One A. They have a pitch, who do they call? Here? Of course not. Do they have a resident engineer on the job?
They do.
Where's his office?
It's in above Jalapenos.
Do they publish his phone number or?
They have a number that they want you to call for complaints.
Yeah, they know whatever picks up.
But, um, they don't generally publish his number.
Because, thanks for power. You lost power? Do you know that today?
No.
Watson's is having much trouble.
Well, the other thing I'll make a complaint about Watson's, they're gonna lose that hill, it's too steep. Whatever, you're supposed to have the design for that, they don't do that.
There is, there are law plans and whatnot, I agree, I looked at that.
Yeah, but what's gonna happen when it slides, it's too late for the jury, gone. It's too steep.
Yeah, of course, that's always good.
Is that the new one, or this is the one that's failing?
That's the one that's getting called sheet. Still right.
You need to put the sheet in or something before that loses.
Jack, can I have the other one? Yeah, thank you. Oh, they are brand new?
Yesterday.
I think she's the most impacted.
Yes.
Because if you look at like, I mean, who's gonna, it's hard to partner.
Is that one okay, Sarah?
It's good, okay.
That's where everyone.
They went beyond where they said they were gonna dig.
I feel bad for her.
Well, it's showing the plan of how they're digging, then, then she marched down the tracks and told me, now.
Well, she will.
Oh, that's why you were working with her.
We'll give you calls. She just talked you into something.
They're not exactly flying on the bridge.
No, they're not.
Our guys have been sitting there four minutes forever, climbing down for what, a month and a half? That's why we don't do bridges, you can't work those morons. They're diggers.
What happened Tuesday night, Wednesday morning, that the power was gone?
I don't know, I haven't heard about that.
I happened to be up on the foot grid, so I did.
Did you?
This might have been long, yeah. Long enough for everybody to shut it on the house.
It was at least three hours. Yeah, at least my office was shut. Because the next morning we dealt with the, the sewer down and that and stuff. Yeah, I didn't live in my house, which is so strange, because I'm so close, but.
Um, they lose power, I told you, they tell the power. Can I tell them across the street, bang on the door? And if they hide under the deck, no, don't tell me you gotta call Boston, because there's an outage right between me and you, right? Bang on the door, wake up. Because I'd assume they would know what's up, right?
Would hope.
You ever done any gas lines yet?
I think he's gonna take it.
Thank you very much. So they're not wanting to find out?
Be careful.
No.
Don't be careful. I won't do it. Thanks.
My very, thank you very much.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Tell you what, I want my driveway pitched and potted by how these guys have taken it. She only needs speed bumps anymore, do you? Seven, ten, okay. Uh, we'll jump to Peach Street, bond release. All right. Now, I see what, everybody saw what Kyle sent, what the bank proposed?
Yeah.
All right, well. Chief, if I was him, I'd do it, but if not, he's still gonna have to come to us for a modification. It's in the decision, so this is out of respect, the law of doing this, he's gonna have to, what do you call it? File for modification, hoping that process, if both were accepted or not. He made something in the decision to close the loop, right?
Yes.
I think that's in there, so, see, to me, I just take out and ask all engineers a thousand bucks, say, finish it, guys, but if not, we'll have to have a man to request a modification and have to clarify that. If I were to send people on the street, so.
I guess that procedure's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's, it's, well.
I mean, the variety of things that could happen out there, you could have done that patch, you could have come along six months later and dumped it off, but don't know it, so it's not a permanent lasting thing, it's not like the approach is something low. Where you can say, okay, it's, it's seventeen feet for those, or fifteen feet with a two and a half foot wide strips, and someone can see the brand new strips on each side, in other words, it's a lasting approach. Payment only lives a certain length. So, you know, we looked at this and said, it'll easily cover, we take the donate, it'll easily cover our expenses.
I, I understand that, but we have a decision that shows him to do it, but there's no loop closure, but the town will do it, so.
Well, like I say, that's a matter of procedure, Mr. Chairman, I guess if Kate wants to notify him, if they're gonna open up and modify that, then I guess that's, of course, you have to go down, it seems like a lot of work for a fairly small patch.
Yeah, so he should just call Osfalt on January 4th and get it over, right?
I guess.
Because you don't have, you even let, you guys haven't bid out the water line, right?
The bid's gonna open June 1st.
All right, but it could start, so this could be a ways away, so he wants.
Yeah, it could be, it could be this year, or it could be early next year, I don't know how much of the million dollar job goes to last few months.
Oh, oh, they didn't defeat.
Correct.
Oh, they'd be, they could be all over town.
Correct.
What other streets?
Oh, off the top of my head, Pillbone's on, June Street's on, I'm not quite sure what else is on there, but there's gotta be a lot more than that, it's that kind of amount.
Oh, okay, what they, well, the only thing I ask is if I could go for the bigger one that makes the most sense, what other street that is, right?
I'm not sure, I honestly, we didn't have a lot to do with it except for June Street and then this little part of Peach Street, so I really haven't gone through the big dogging, so.
Oh, I'm just.
And we don't have a contractor on board.
Oh, yeah, but it, so, no.
So, if once that contract is on board, we'll know which time we're gonna approach it, but the patent's there, it's holding up, I actually think the gas company put that one in, because it's really mostly a gas trench.
All right, well, if you wanna close the loop and have the donny, that's fine, Kate, if you just wanna say, you can do that.
Do you, do you?
You can either do it or just, you know, mind a modification, just to go through the motions of.
So you want him to either go ahead and do it or, okay?
Yeah, go ahead and do it or come back, we gotta close the loop on the decision, that's all. Probably cost you more postage than having done.
So what are you suggesting again?
Because we have a decision that reflects him to mill, pave Peach Street, but if he, if he writes a check to the town, there's nothing to close the loop on the decision. Falls down.
Okay.
So he's required per our decision to do this work. If all of a sudden he doesn't do the work, what happens? There's no record of it, so to speak, in the decision. People know, but there's nothing in the decision. Anything in the decision has to be modified.
Why not? So just to keep it technically on the straight, now, Mr. Chairman, the plan's called for two keys and an overlay, that's what this was, uh, maybe approved, and that's what you did. In the estimate, I showed the mill, because that's what we're gonna end up doing with, because we'll go through there and most likely, if you care a mo, a good deal of the road out in the water main. So that's why the mill is in there, so that's really the estimate he should have got, was to cut two keys and buy that overlay, it wouldn't be right.
Well, again, I share with him that it's, it's cheap, or air wood, lots of doors, but as far as the end of the work, for the developer doing the work, to close out the decision.
Is that what you meant when you said it did not exactly match?
Correct. As the contractor that provided the estimate, he was gonna pull the pavement, put in gravel on that.
Yeah, that's.
Replace that patch away, and that's not what the plan was coming, that's a little excessive. Uh, they're cautious, they do good work, so they just don't wanna do it, have a jump all the time.
Uh, we are at seven fifteen, we have Clock Tower. Okay, the hour being after seven fifteen, we have a continued public hearing for site plan twenty-two oh two for East Walpole Clock Tower, and from legacy engineering, on behalf of the applicant. This is May 5th, I'm ready to request a continued self-discussion till your June 16th meeting, to continue to work, the departments in the town, and I request an extension through June 30th, 2022. And I'll be here, I'll make a motion to allow a session through June 30th. Second discussion, all in favor?
Who's second?
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Okay, you got time for June 16th, please?
Yep. We do. Um, the only other thing that's on is twenty-four Heidi Street at seven fifteen.
Right after that, like we do, so we don't lose any time.
So you wanna put it at seven twenty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do that one, then that big one, after the seven sixteen, let's pass that. And another one. Uh, with the hour being after seven sixteen, we have a continued public hearing for one seventy-three High Plains Street. Site plan twenty-two oh one, and from legacy engineering, on behalf of the applicant, he'd like to continue this to the June 16th, 2020 meeting, he's given us an extension through June 30th, 2022. Make a motion, grant extension through June 30th, 2022? And a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
And?
Seven twenty-five?
Seattle, why not? I'm not, I'm not sure what's going, High Plain, but, no, High Plain, no.
They're gonna be a new plant.
Yeah, they're, they're dealing with the zoning board. And the way that appears is the fact that they gotta get what the zoning board wants before they can really do.
Thank you.
Us, so. Seven twenty-five. That's where they were last night then. Okay. Oh, man. Try something else. But, with the hour, it's not even the hour, we can do it anytime, two lots subdivision, Warwick Road preliminary, so it's, it's not a, I mean, it's not a public hearing, so we don't speak to the time, but we're out there anyway, so.
You gonna take it now?
Yeah, we gave it, yeah, get it out, we'll take it eight thirty, just play cards.
Appreciate it. Know you got a lot of good jobs.
Yes. All right, so. You're aware, Mr. Petrosi, is, this is just a preliminary, whether we say we love it, we hate it, or whatever, it really doesn't matter. As far as.
I just gave it to you like this.
Yeah. So.
So, as you've noted in the application, this is the two lot subdivision off the extension of Warwick Road. Warwick Road is an accepted public way up to the property line. Uh, what we're simply doing is extending roughly a hundred feet into the property, the cul-de-sac, to create two lots, and the reimbursements of the properties that are numbered three fifty and three nineteen Summer Street. Pretty simple, uh, subdivision, and, uh, when the time comes, we'll probably be asking for some leniency from the board regarding its, uh, construction standards for the roadway, uh, sidewalks, curbing, aiming with that sort of thing, so. That's essentially it, it's out of town water, town sewer, that's a full stormwater management basin, and there's a location here. And, uh, two lots backs up to Boyd and Estates, you probably know. And, um, there's an existing sewer that runs through the property that I'm piloting here, that takes sewer from Washington Summer Street, some of the UJ's roadway on Summer Street. That, uh, will remain from this current situation. That's pretty much it.
All right, Kyle, I know you have comments, actually, Chris, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Assistant Town Engineer reviewed the plans and issued a letter dated April 26th. In general, I agree, in fact, I agree with listening, Petrosi said that this conference design meets the planning board standards for road with, um, everything, at least that it's shown, profile, all those things. Should fall to the rules and rights of the subdivision, it doesn't show a lot of line receiving in the subdivision, but it is there, it's at the intersection of Warwick Road and Wall Street. Briefly going over the comments, uh, the first comment is the Assistant Town Engineer asking to identify possible use or, uh, showing possible prospective future use for the parcel all the way to the right of that plan as you look at it, that was once part of one of the Boyd and Ma, Boyd and Ma blocks. We've noted that Warwick Road is laid out as a public way, um, all the way to its unconstructed end, so actually, the improvements within Warwick Road with the, under the jurisdiction of the board of selectmen, so installing the culvert and doing all the things up there would probably be under the board of selectmen's purview. We've noted, we would like the title of the road to be Warwick Road, naming it Warwick Road Extension, that's, there's no name on it right now, leads to confusion later on as to whether it should actually have that name. Which will. There you go. And then we've noted a few things, rather than note everything that's gonna be required on the definitive plan, then just a few things to show the existing pavement width for the road and walk at the end of Warwick Road, so it can be tied in. The preliminary plan rules want you to show trees larger than twelve inch. And then we've asked for the house locations for five and seven Wall Street, ten Warwick Road. And then correct the labeling on the sewer manhole and drain manhole at the intersection of Warwick Road, they're cross labeled. We wanna show the end of the, it current eight inch water main at Warwick and Wall, and, uh, you'll see, road will need a hydrant if it is served with town water, and that's Mr. Petrosi's statement, and to do that, so there'll need to be a hydrant, there's a hydrant there. Yeah, we suspect, actually, the fire, the fire department will make a call, but we suspect that they'll want one up, the cul-de-sac as well. That's it.
You will afford me a copy of those comments, please?
Yes.
Kyle, question for you?
Yes.
Since it's not on here, this is in an aquifer zone, correct?
I don't know.
I have an Area Four. According to my.
Yeah, okay, it's an Area Four, so there it's four, it's for eighty thousand.
Right, well, there'll be sewer then.
Oh, you have sewer?
Yeah, sewer.
Okay. You do have, you can tap into that, okay, it's not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll need to be a little looking into that, I don't know how that easement got created, and if it ever was conveyed to the town, I mean, we found a plan in two thousand for that easement, for that sewer easement, and it wasn't to the town, so it wasn't created as part of the town sewer project that I'm aware of. So I don't know if the town has rights to that easement right now or not, but it is served, it appears to be serving municipally.
Right, well, my understanding is that it, I don't know what that road is off of.
Comstock.
Comstock, but I think it was put in for that, don't they, it's the road to Comstock?
They do, and that's also my understanding.
Oh, this one, yeah, went right to Conley's, yeah, way back.
Okay.
With Comstock, was that Joey's? Yeah, they got the Conley's down, bottom of the hill. You couldn't do anything, your Valentine Drive?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was done. Ten years ago.
But I still don't know if that easement was conveyed to the town.
That'll be.
One other question, quickly, Kyle, is you said, where does the road stop, at the stone wall?
No, it doesn't make it that far, I think it's actually, there we go, there's a line right there.
Up to here, then the rest of it, this is on paved to the stone wall.
Okay, the question I have is, it's not my firm, so don't worry about it. No, you don't worry about it, neither do I, but, um, is the road laid out to the stone wall, is it laid out to the end of the?
It is.
Laid out, it's accepted all the way to the stone.
All right, so what we faced on Nottingham is that's a public way maintained by the town, so on that, we didn't have to do anything, but at the end, where they did the cul-de-sac, it had to be up to the standards. This road was all dirt, you wouldn't have to do anything if the town, it's a town way, who told? Does that make, that make sense?
Well, there is, there is pavement, and there is a.
I just, yeah, what I'm saying, Lou, is on Nottingham Way, it's a little twelve foot wide, you're trying to do something in the back, and they did two lot subdivision. We didn't have any jurisdiction on Nottingham Way, because it was a way by the town, used by the town, so, you know, that's improving, but where you started your new road, you had to meet, so that's kind of, where you start a new road on, on your property, which would be the stone wall, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, correct.
So whatever you wanna do in between, if you're not gonna pave it, I mean, we don't get jurisdiction over that.
Well, we'll try to make the most of track of stuff, the most as two lots.
Okay, that's, I just wondered, so we, because Nottingham looks like, maybe you can call it that.
Yeah, that, and I was around for part of that, but that's, Nottingham is a bit more unusual, this is.
No, I understand, yeah.
And, I guess it's a little unusual for a town to accept a piece of roadway that's not constructed, but that's what they did back in seventy-nine or eighty, and that's, that's that. Yeah.
That was my two quick comments, Sarah?
Okay, um, so I think most of the information is shown, have no, like, major concerns, it's just a couple of comments, questions. Like I mentioned, I, I do believe it's Area Four, so that should be noted on the plans, water resource, Area Four. And I'm sure you know, but just to advise you that you would need a special permit if you had impervious greater than fifteen percent, or, um, plan to do any earth removal according to the bylaw, that would trigger a special permit.
Right, what is the impervious again?
Um, just if you have impervious surface on the lot greater than fifteen percent, then that would trigger.
Fifteen percent of the total lot?
Fifteen percent of what's required for zoning, yeah, so unlikely, but. 15% of what's required for zoning, yeah, so unlikely, but...
What's required for zoning, or what's required on the lot?
I believe what's required for zoning.
So 40,000 would be 15% of 40, and the other one would be 15% of 40?
Not, not 30%?
No, not, no, not 15% of the, it's whatever the lot is.
Is that because, is that without sewer, or with sewer?
I think, just if you're, if you're in the Water Resource Protection area. And then you mentioned something about the sidewalk, are you hoping to not extend the sidewalk? And if so, why?
I haven't really gotten that far yet.
Okay.
I would think for this particular type of extension, two lots, that you really wouldn't want to, if we're in aquifer zone, we'd want to limit the impervious surface, so that would tend to include roadway, sidewalk, anything that's impervious. So if that's a concern, then you might want to consider not requiring.
Yeah. Personally, I would rather have the sidewalk.
Excuse me?
Personally, I would rather have the sidewalk for safe pedestrian travel.
Not my call, it's...
Yeah.
I'm just suggesting that these are things that are impervious that might go up in the discussion later on.
Yeah. And then you mentioned also the roadway width, what are you planning, do you have a number in mind for the roadway width?
Well, we do.
I thought you said you were asking for the board's leniency on that.
Yeah, I will. As I've been told, you don't discuss waivers at this stage in the process, so I'll bring it with me to the table.
Okay.
It's shown as 26 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's got to show that on a preliminary, you can do everything.
Is it, is it labeled on the plan?
No, it's, no, but we scaled it.
Okay.
I, I don't, well, I...
I didn't, I didn't see it labeled.
This is an asset right plan.
Okay.
Shows everything.
Okay.
We would like to see some, I would say, leniency on some of the regulations that would limit impervious surface, roadway width.
Yeah.
Cul-de-sac.
Yeah. What about the, the length of the road? So once you do the extension, do you have the length of Warwick Road?
Yeah.
The total length? Or it's just to Wall Street?
Just from Wall Street there, it's really a couple hundred feet.
Couple hundred feet, okay.
This is only about 100.
Okay.
Cul-de-sac is about 100, so...
Okay, okay. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, you know, when and if we get to that, I would just say that this board, you know, defers mostly to the fire department if they, if they have any questions or concerns about the roadway width or cul-de-sac size or things like that.
Amendment on, it's 20 feet for their emergency access.
Yeah. Okay, and that, just to, I just have a comment to add the roadway width and the road profile to the sheet. That's it, thank you.
So you colored this in, it looks nicer than mine.
That's what I do with spare time.
So is that all what it...
This is all, what's in green here is a vegetated woodland.
Okay.
And it's been certified by the Gunkum, the Indian wine. So this area here is the odd area for this house, so there's not many trees on it, most lawn area.
It's clear, okay.
And then this area here is tree, but not a heavily treated, this, the rest of the site. This parcel here that Wall Street owns, originally when we were putting this together, we thought we could extend this further and get a lot out of it, but we don't see a product because of the extensive woodland network. So we've just tried to just provide enough frontage for the two lots and as possible, maybe parkland.
Okay, that was, you got to what I was getting at, so you planned what you could do. That's all I had.
We're done with 40 minutes for now.
Good.
Basically the same question, Katie, the shaded area, that's the limits of the wetlands areas?
The green, yes.
That's basically the only question I had.
Yes.
Make it blue.
Go, blue, drag, drag. Blue, blue, drag.
Oh, I'm sorry. Question is, well, one is part of the whole deal, correct? Well, the one on Summer Street.
Well, the one on Summer Street is probably the odd lot, so I don't know why they put it in there that way.
Okay, lot two, is that side of this too?
Same thing, yeah. They're, they're the owners of the properties, so they're applicants, owners.
Oh, they own lot four?
Lot four is, where's lot four? Another way to... Lot, lot, well, there was, lot two probably extends all the way down.
Gotcha.
And lot one probably extends all the way, just long.
Yep. Alright, my last comment will be that you're gonna have to ensure when you come back that lot four adds an upwind of 60%.
Oh, yeah, 60% of the zone.
So that's 24,000.
Yeah.
That's gonna have to be on the plan.
Right.
I don't want to have to ask the truists to put it on. Yeah, it's always, so that's the only other comment I have, so. If anyone makes, if nothing else, anyone make a call.
So there's, I mean, nothing major, but there's several things, do we want to, like, approve with modifications? Do we want to entertain that, or are we just letting it come out in the wash?
For, just to...
Yeah, grant tentative approval on that.
T tentative approval or tentative approval with modifications?
T tentative approval on a preliminary plan. Doesn't do many, it's good one way or another.
It could do, it's just subject to your college nearsman home, and whatever.
But it, it, it doesn't get recorded, it doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, a lot of times we'll see preliminary and, you know, there'll be like two comments, and no big deal. But this one, I don't know, especially Carl seemed to have a lot to say, so...
It's up to him to, it's kind of like a discussion plan, only the state allows the preliminary.
Tentative approval, are you alright with that?
Yeah, tentative approval.
We really didn't have all that much to say.
Okay.
Because Chris did, did tell me that.
It's there.
Yeah.
It's pretty much meets the requirements, there's a few nuances, there's around almost any piece of land that we're running to, but...
Okay, so motion for tentative approval then.
Okay, do we got a second?
Second.
Discussion on the table?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Charles has the motion.
And... Bond reduction request number four, Boyd and the States, Carl, on April 28th. And second original bond is 211-926, value may have the third was 52,025% of 211. Value may have the fourth request is 69,500. So we went up, so just hang on.
We went up, Mr. Chairman, because there's a farm in the roadway paving, finished pave was done late last fall. It's shown a crack recently, or within some time, so it went to progress, which is unusual for a recent paved road. Very difficult to fix pavement, so you either do it right or you take it off. There may be an interim solution, but it needs to be investigated. So we put milling and paving back in the estimate, and that's what brought the numbers up.
Okay. This was the Russo.
I believe he was the founder, yeah. I, I should...
Well, Mr. Chairman, we provided the one-year warranty from the Russo.
Yeah, but that doesn't hold.
And they're, they're investigating.
Well, he's got problems on East Street too, right?
He does.
He did the same thing there, Lou, so it's not you.
Those, those get on my back, I, I just want my money, I mean, he's responsible, right?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have a grain of them, it's still, he's still on the property, so we can't drive.
No, I have a warranty, if we have an onsite meeting and we discuss what the remedy is, maybe it needs to be co-plained in certain areas or whatever, that's...
He's offered no further reduction.
I really need the money, though.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, we're, we're, to indicate, Mr. Chairman, we're also having some of the same issues, almost nearly identical issues to some of the roads that were paved for us. So we're involved with researching and negotiating that.
It's May 5th.
So what is the game plan on those, what is the strategy of the towns that you do on those roads, what are you doing?
So, we're still in discussion about that, but there's probably going to be some analysis of what went down on, and actually, there's, we're discussing about removal and replacement as well, so it's not settled yet, but those are all on the table, so this is a similar...
Who would...
We propose similar remedies for the town roads.
Do you mind providing the name of the person that you're talking to? It's just, I was told they have a call and control guy or something, that is, you wouldn't read those things, but I don't, I don't know his name. So I, I think East Street and my street, on Boyd, we both paved around the same time, you know?
They were, but yes, I'll, I'll be more than glad to provide.
Okay, I'll wait for the resolution here, not just in the future.
I know, because you're just barely making any money on houses now, and it's a tight market. Alright, so we're gonna leave it at this, now, just not, none to do with what we just discussed here, but here's an example, Whitman Homes. Right?
I agree.
If we went, look what happened. I mean, he pissed it, oh, we're still on TV, I don't care about over 25%, but if we did, this stuff can pop up, and we'd be really up the creek.
Yeah, in all honesty, Mr. Chairman, I'm regretting the fact that I let the paving go last fall because of, you know, something like this could happen.
Oh, well, yeah, but...
It's what the warranty is for.
The warranty isn't with us.
I think it's the warranty, warranty.
Not, not...
Could I take you?
So that's what can happen, and the other problem we have everywhere is the mix has gone way up, so that's even a bigger thing.
We're approximately 20, $20, it's on higher than we were last year, so 95 versus 76, so that, that's pretty fair percentage increase. It's not in our favor, for sure.
No. Get something, she wouldn't say that, it's good, but, okay.
We do, and we actually adjust the numbers on the trees.
You got street trees?
And there, street trees are in the healthy, he's happy with them, they're in the places that he should be.
So we don't have anybody signing people's names and complaining about the neighbors who won't sign?
No.
I'm talking, you weren't here for that with Hassen, I mean, we started quoting people's names and all that. John, take that one, assume you don't, yeah, but we've always had problems with street, even with walls. Oh, you're good with street trees?
Yeah.
I still want them.
They're, they're good since last fall.
I still want them. These trees, where they should go.
Yeah.
I battled Maggie with that forever, she's, well, it's gonna wreck the sidewalks, it's gonna come up, I said, what about the trees downtown? Well, those are different trees.
It's the same little tree.
Yeah, that's what I said. We get more trouble?
Those were the old maple trees.
Nothing to wrong with bank or right, Mr. Chairman, but my prior town also did it that way, they were all set back as well behind the right of way.
But guess what? When people own them, you plant them at 7 o'clock, at 7:01, they can count them out, it's on private property, so... Anyway, I don't, we have nothing else on the agenda, so our next meeting is...
The 19th of May.
What?
19th of May.
Oh, okay, what's, anything on...
Um, 10 acres update, 1429 Main Street site plan continued, and Marion Street extension subdivision.
Is that all ready to go now?
Sorry, I don't know.
It's all filed and everything?
Sorry.
Alpin's file ready?
Yep, everything's...
Okay, alright, so make a motion to the chairman?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same.
Hope you feel better, Carl.
I know.